404. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll do a roll call for Planning Commission members present. Heather Lind here, Howard Trips. Okay, Abby Dahlman.
Here.
Bryce Erlich.
Present.
Aaron Palin.
Here.
And then we know that Lupe Bobadilla will not be with us tonight. Roll call of county commissioners, I have Commissioner Mudge. Commissioner Marcella.
Here.
And Commissioner Fiedler.
Heather, Commissioner Fiedler had let Paul and I know that he may have to listen to the recording. He had an overlapping commitment this evening.
Okay, thank you. I think we just have one change to the agenda to move the rezone to the front. Any other questions or changes? Okay, and we have minutes to approve from July 26. And I believe all three of us were at that meeting, so I think we can, or four of us actually, can approve those. Do I have a motion to approve the July 26 meeting minutes?
Yeah, I moved to approve the July 26 meeting minutes.
My second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion or? Okay, Paul in favor, hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. That moves us down to new business and we'll go ahead and start with file 21-15, which is the Murphy rezone, and I will give the court to Ann to get us started on that.
Thank you Heather, but Paul's actually.
Paul's doing it. Yeah, sorry Paul. Paul, please. The floor is yours.
Ann, don't you want to do it? What we have here before us, in fact, I wonder if I could share a screen. There we go. Okay, this is the area in question. This is down in Eaton Hill Estates. You may noticed on the center left is Lost Canyon Road. And and then on the red, the red line on the right is Highway 24. Does everybody have their bearings on this? I guess I can presume that we do all have our bearings on this. The parcel in question is the parcel that is outlined, is shaded gray and is outlined in blue. It's, I think it's about a seventeen acre parcel of land. Now, this zoning was in place at least in 1982 when these parcels were platted by the court. And I suspect it may have had this zoning before that, but I just didn't bother to research it that far. Before then. So most of these parcels are have been controlled by Dennis O'Neill's descendants and corporations and things. There's a couple of them here that are not so controlled. Inasmuch as the zoning on the parcel here in question is zoned industrial mining, and it was purchased by the applicant, Richard Murphy, a couple of years ago. And I didn't, it didn't, I didn't notice it a couple of years ago until it became abundantly clear to me about a year ago that the zoning won't work for Mr. Murphy. He bought this parcel in order to build a house on it. And you can't build a house on IM zoning. So, so we told Mr. Murphy that the thing that he could do is go back to the party that sold him the parcel, or the realtor that sold him the parcel, and ask what to do about it at that time. But he's chosen to move forward with a zone change application, which is his right to do. What, one of the requirements for rezoning to RC zoning is that the minimum lot acre size be three acres. This one is seventeen and a half acres. In the area of land the parcel is requesting to join is about eight hundred acres, which is well within the required acreage required for an RC zone district. So it looks like that's twenty acres. So generally speaking, there's nothing to preclude Mr. Murphy making application and to get this to be zoned RC so that he can actually have a house on it. I think that it's a little bit concerning and consternating for Ann and I, and we're not alone. Yes, that this parcel, and one other parcel, have actually been sold for the purposes Mr. Murphy bought it for, without any disclosure that the property was IM zoned. At least to our knowledge, that's the case. It kind of concerns us that the that this issue is being left for the county to resolve. And while the county can resolve it, we don't know that it's actually our responsibility to do so. Having said that, I will also say that I've had a fairly extensive conversation with the county attorney regarding this matter. And I think it boils down to the fact that it doesn't really matter how the parcel was acquired. As incensed as we may be, it isn't a requirement of findings. So as much as we might want to talk about this matter, it really isn't germane to the question before us. Should we rezon this parcel to RC or not? Now, having said that, can you see my little pointer? Everybody is, I think, nodding, yes. In the process of notifying all of these parcels around here, it's come to our notice that this person who received the notice is also going to be submitting an application for rezoning to RC, which is going to create something of a checkerboard pattern here. That by itself is just going to look weird, but I'm not sure that's a problem. I will also say that this parcel down here on the west side of Lost Canyon Road has also been sold to a party that didn't know you couldn't build a house on it. And I believe they have gone back to their realtor to see what can happen there. The Murphys bought this two years ago. These people here bought theirs like six months ago. So what's going to happen here is that this parcel here is going to look like this parcel here, and we're going to have these three parcels right here left over as industrial mining, and then this parcel as well as this parcel to be industrial mining. Now, it's going to look weird, but there's nothing to indicate that it can't be done, such as the minimum remaining lot size that's required for IM zoning is only half an acre. And we have an abundance of acreage that's left over down here. So we don't have any resulting spot zone. As a result, it's just going to look weird. It's going to look like like there wasn't much planning involved in doing this. And as ashamed as I am to say that, it's all legitimate. So with that, the staff report provides you with an analysis of the findings that need to be made, which isn't very much. And then there are two recommended motions, one for approval and one for denial. The only reason that there isn't one for a conditional approval is that there really is no such thing. It either is zoned or it is not zoned. Any conditions placed on it really might not would be improper and could possibly be illegal. Now, if any of you planning commissioners or board have any questions of me, I'm available to entertain them. I might also point out that the county attorney is visiting us here today, and she might actually be able to put into words better than I did about the relevance of how this parcel was acquired. I'm done.
And this is Chris, I'll just chime in and say, I think, Paul, you stated it just fine. I don't think that the, you know, the code isn't such that it prohibits reconsideration of this zoning. And so that's why the acquisition aspect of it is more an issue for the buyer. And especially if it ends up that the Planning Commission and subsequently the Board of County Commissioners decides not to grant the application for rezoning in regards to any representations that may have been made when they purchased the property. So that's not the county's issue to resolve for them. That's that's left in their hands at the end of the day.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, and I will say that I know, I actually heard about, and I don't know which of these parcels, but obviously I heard about this scenario and to be a hundred percent honest with you, I had no idea there was this little piece of IM out there on Lost Canyon Road. It seems so random. Do we know why? So I guess I too would like to separate the two because I, you know, as Chris is alluding to, I don't think how they acquired it matters to us as far as determining whether or not we're going to allow the rezone. For my own purposes, I guess I'd like to understand if we know why it was created in the first place as to whether or not it matters if we take any IM out of it. If just because, like I said, I was so surprised to even hear that there was this little section of IM. It seemed kind of random to me to begin with that off the top of my head, since I don't know why it was created, I don't know why we couldn't rezon these guys to recreational, just because that seems to be the general nature of the lands out there. But if we have any idea why it's IM and why we need to possibly keep it IM, then I think that would be more relevant to me in making this decision.
I'm happy to offer a little history, Heather. So in doing some research of the IM zoning when this issue came up, I went back to the original adoption of the zoning regulations back in 1976 and discovered that it had an intentional use. It has, the zoning was put in place to support gravel operation, to support further development in the area for infrastructure and for basically for the master plan that Dennis O'Neill had for Quail Mountain. So it was intentionally zoned as such, and in fact, I recall another time when another property owner, I'm going to get his name on, it's Steve. I can't remember his last name, but he had accidentally as well acquired a piece of this property and had entertained rezoning it, and this is probably about fifteen years ago. But when Dennis found out that the property had gone, had actually been sold, he reached out and was willing to find a different parcel and did a de-transfer with him because he felt that there was a reason for keeping this tract intact for that use. So the zoning was actually placed there intentionally to support gravel operations in the area, and there's actually remnants, I think, still on site of some of that heavy equipment that supported, you know, maybe some of that work that had been done years ago. But that's the history that we found when we looked into, you know, when this came to be and how it came to be, and then also the recollection that it had been his intent at that time to keep it intact for the use of being able to extract mineral or the resource and utilization of it. So it did have a bit of an intentional nature originally.
Ann, this is Chris. Any chance in your research, you came across what it was zoned before that?
It was zoned that originally when we first adopted zoning. So it was from the inception of zoning in Lake County.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Have there been mining operations? Or is just an aside for a pinch, y'all?
So, you know, I think that there appears to maybe have been some activity there. I couldn't find any record with the area mass of anything. We have been alerted that there's some new interest in an area of the family to pursue it.
Okay.
Yeah, you can, you can see, Erin, or Abby, I think it was you that asked the question. This area that I'm circling now is kind of the remnants of a gravel pit, I think has been dormant for a very long time.
If I may jump in, guys, and tell me if I'm speaking out of place, but may I jump in?
Yeah, well, hang on just one second for me. I need to go through Planning Commissioner questions first, and then we'll open it up for public response and questions as well.
I think you probably need to give it to the applicant after the Planning Commission and the board ask questions of staff.
Yep, correct. Any other questions from Planning Commissioners?
My, yeah, I had a question. Is a gravel pit in the industrial mining zone a use by right, or would that go through the conditional use permit process?
It would go through two permitting processes. It, one would be a conditional use permit with the county, and the other one would be a mining permit, quite likely a 112 mining permit with Colorado Division of Reclamation Mining and Safety. So there are some loops that need to be jumped through in order for this to be done.
Would this parcel be being rezoned affect the ability to mine the IM, remaining IM parcels?
No, I don't see that it can. You do need some significant amount of land area. But there's, there's probably thirty-five or forty acres total here that's being left. In yeah, it's probably about thirty-five or forty acres that's actually being left to mine.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Planning Commission before we just go ahead and hear from applicant? Aaron, go ahead.
Yeah, just real quick, I kind of want it on public record, but zoning is public knowledge, right? So whether it's disclosed, like everyone has access to figure out the zoning of any area, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I do know, again, it's not necessarily relevant how they acquired it. I do know that in some situations, from what I've heard in some of these instances, that even the seller didn't know about the zoning issue. So, and there were some people who thought, well, it would have been disclosed on my title work, and that's not how zoning works. So there's like, there's a lot of misconceptions out there about how you investigate your zoning. So it's how we get that information out is, you know, sometimes we think we've got it out there enough, but we don't, so.
Well, at least in this meeting, it's now, it's, you can find it on the GIS and in the tax records online.
I think it is the responsibility of the buyer to make sure.
Yeah.
And is there is there a potential negative precedent being set with IM claims switching over to RC? Like, do we have to consider that, or do we have to focus solely on this?
Excellent question. And I think in the specifics concerning this one, down in this area, I don't think it'll set any, necessarily set any precedent on any other IM zoned parcels that would like to be rezoned to whatever else is surrounding it. I think in this case, we have it's a small area compared to our other areas of IM zoning. I suspect that the, or the, I think that we may have some people in attendance here today that will be able to tell us more about whether gravel mining will actually occur here. But I don't think the specifics of this particular case are necessarily going to set any kind of precedent anywhere else. But it's a good question because pretty much everything that the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioners actually do has the potential for setting some degree, however small, of precedent.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to hand it over to the applicant. If you have anything that you would like to add and/or state for the Commission and County Commissioners before we open it up to public comment.
Hi, it's Rich Murphy, and I think it's been described fairly, so I don't have anything to add at this point.
Great, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Okay, at this time, if you could please raise your hand if you are public and would like to speak, and I know Josh O'Neill had raised his hand first, and we'll go ahead and start with you.
Perfect, very much. I appreciate the time to talk on this. I am, I guess if you will, a descendant of Dennis O'Neill. I am the grandson, and I have a heavy interest in that property that surrounds this particular parcel. This has all been zoned industrial mining. I want to say since somewhere around October of 1976, when zoning was adopted by Lake County. That's a lot of years. That was a functional gravel pit. When I was a child, there is still two gravel operation pieces of equipment out there. And the plans going forward with the property that's in an estate right now, once it is out of the estate, we plan, I already have another company, everything to come in and lease it and do all the permits, and they want to run a full bore operation out of there. I think this could be detrimental to rezon this one parcel when we, you can even see on the map or even on the GIS map, that there is a road that leads from the highway right next to this particular parcel, and you're going to have haul trucks, semis, everything running. As a homeowner myself, I'm not sure that I'd want that right next to my home. I'm not in this guy's position, so I can't make that, but this has been zoned industrial mining since seventy-six. Also, I'd like to point out that in the comprehensive plan, it was amended, I want to say, back in 2018. And it was to also strengthen the prohibition of industrial mining properties. With the growth of our small communities in these mountains, we need to keep our resources. And this, yes, it is a smaller industrial mining place, if you will. It's not as large as others, but do we want to give up those resources for our growth if that's actually what we want as a community? Do we want to give up those resources? I would say no. I think that would be detrimental to our future. Because if we can't mine the gravel and mine the dirt, we're not going to have road base. We're not going to have a lot of other things. And there has been a few studies done in the past, the dirt in the gravel that is actually in that pit right now is some of the best product, even throughout the Shafie County pits. So I think it would be something that we really need to look at before making a rezon. You know, a real estate transaction, we're supposed to do our due diligence and check what things are zoned. Some of us hire real estate agents for that, others hire attorneys, title companies. Somebody should have caught this. It's just bad luck that nobody did, and now we're here. And I don't believe that we need to put this burden on Lake County. I don't think it's Lake County's burden to have. I, I would really look at this hard before we rezon it into residential, because say if he builds a house and then we end up a couple of years down the road, we end up coming in, we put in a full-blown gravel operation. Well, he's going to be upset that we're running a gravel operation right next to his front door. Well, then he's going to want to sell. Is he going to get what he truly needs out of the house and what he's got invested into it to be able to move, or is he going to take a giant loss? I think that's something to look at as well. If anybody's got any questions for me, I do have a lot of background with that entire area. Feel free to reach out to me. And I think that's all for me.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment or applicant response, anything there that we need to address before we open it up for more questions? I have a hand raised by Kyle Jesse.
Yeah, hi, we're the ones on the little tiny parcel to the left in the map that you guys had up. So I'm curious, it sounds like there's a couple parcels that have been sold in kind of a checkerboard pattern. And Josh, you're talking about opening up mining and other parcels. I'm curious which parcels would then be mining operations versus ones that have been sold?
All the ones for that we plan on, and I can't give anybody a date. It's going to be all the ones that are left. And it's basically start where the equipment and everything is now. At least that's my vision, but that vision can change. When I get this contractor in here, he's going to look at it and he's going to have a different idea than I will. So I could say, hey, we're going to start in the northeast corner. He may want to start in the west corner. That I don't know.
So your stuff is split already? Because if we're talking checkerboard-ish, there's three that are already sold?
That I am unaware of. I can just basically go off of what the Lake County GIS map has. I got it pulled up now. I know Paul had mentioned earlier, you know, if you look at the one that's blacked out on Paul's map, if you go to the northeast, the one on the corner there, and then go over, you can kind of see, yep, right there where the pointer's at. That's where the actual gravel operation, some of the equipment still is. To the west of that, that parcel from what Lake County GIS map has is my uncle, George Safkin. I was unaware that that one had sold. I was unaware that that one had, had sold. I had actually talked to my uncle not too long ago, and he said, no, he's going to keep it for the gravel operation. So, you know, I'm not sure. Maybe it did get sold. Maybe, I'm not sure. We'd have to look at some deed work and all that.
No, I can assure you, it's still, it's still your uncle's. Uh, it was your, um, but I don't know what decisions have been made since then. And Josh and Kyle, I wonder if you could refrain from having a conversation in this hearing? And please direct your questions and concerns to the chairman, Heather Lynn.
Okay, sorry about that. You got it.
So in, in all of these parcels, there's eight of parcels here. I think um, six of them are owned by uh, the O'Neil family in one form or another. Uh, two of them have been sold. This one here, and then this one here. The rest of these are under the control of somebody in the O'Neil family.
Yeah, it's interesting because on the GIS maps, it doesn't say that. It shows that all of these are owned by. It only shows this parcel here. But, and I, I can share this screen, um, so that we can look at it. Um, so I show this one under the O'Neil Associates. I showed this one under Twin Lakes Associates, but still same care of person. This one's George Safkins. I show this one under O'Neil. This one under Swatch Enterprises, also same care of. Same here. And then this is Mr. Tay, Mr. Murphy's. And then this is back to O'Neil and Associates again. So I only show the one.
And the only one you're missing is just to the west of Lost Canyon Road, that one there, that tiny parcel, just under.
Yeah.
Still in the IM as well.
Yeah, so maybe it's this piece that you're thinking of, Paul, that sold separate? Just this little tail on this side of thirty. And I'm sorry, I have somebody with their hand raised, but there's no name on there.
Uh, this is Jenna Mazuka. I'm not sure if you were looking at my raised hand. I can see my name on my screen, so I'm not sure why you cannot.
Yes, please.
Um, so I'm the care of person there. And what I can tell you is that those were all entities owned by Mr. O'Neil, of which I'm responsible now for distributing as part of his estate. And as Josh O'Neil indicated, you know, at this point, um, there are some discussion about whether or not those are going to be distributed in kind to descendants of Mr. O'Neil or something else, you know, sold. Um, in fact, I think we sold parcel twelve tract one, which is, I, I believe in this map you guys were looking at. Um, and they may be one of the people that, you know, thought they were getting a recreational zoned piece of property. I don't really have a whole lot to do with that. I hire a real estate agent to say, I have fifty-four lots I need sold. Please help get them sold. Um, but as you, the lots that we're talking about that are left, either in Swatch Enterprises, Twin Lake Associates, O'Neil and Associates, or Dennis O'Neil's name are in dispute, may be, you know, deeded to the beneficiaries and, and used for that intended purpose, as Josh is saying, or, or may not, depending on how his estate shakes up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Lynn, if I may, follow-up question for Ms. Mazuka. Do we have an idea in terms of how far along in the probate process that, that is?
So, uh, it's really not up to me because I'm not the one fighting. I just do what I'm ordered and, and unfortunately, um, I think that my impression is really nothing has been filed to say, hey, Judge, we have this dispute. Let's um, set a hearing and resolve it. It's just, I'm aware of this dispute and continuing to speak with the beneficiaries, attorneys about how we're going to resolve it. My strategy was sell the ones that aren't at issue, right? Um, and we'll deal with these at the end. And we are getting to the point where we are at the end. These are some of the only parcels left in the estate. And so we will be turning our attention to that. Um, but my guess would be in terms of, you know, the, the beneficiaries could agree in thirty days to, to settle the issue, or they could litigate it for two years. I, I can't say.
And so it, just to follow up on that too. So when you're saying that the dispute between the beneficiaries is, is the nature of disputes such that folks like Mr. O'Neil wish to maintain the, the property and have it distributed to the beneficiaries and others are saying they wish it to be sold?
That is what is at question, yes.
Okay. So at the end of the day, depending on what happens to that court action, it very well could be that if there's a uh, decision that the property is to be sold, that none of these parcels could end up being used for their originally intended purpose?
Um, I, I believe there is at least one parcel that it sounds like the uncle owns, and, and I, I'm not sure if Mr. Josh O'Neil owns anything in this area or not. Um, it didn't look like it based on what Ms. Lynn just went through. But it, it is possible that the ones I'm talking about where she went through and showed, you know, the same care of person being me, that those could end up um, ordered, sold, yes.
Okay, thank you. So just to clarify, if you didn't catch commissioners as to why I was asking that question, because this might not be the last request for rezoning you get if these parcels are ordered to be sold. Um, and it ends up buyers wish to purchase them for a different purpose, as a couple of other folks apparently have already done.
Yeah, this is trickier than it first portrayed to us, I think. Um, I'd love to hear some, oh, look, Erin's got her hand up. I like that. Go for it.
To be here, people might buy into IM for the same purpose of gravel mining. So it's a little tough to be able to like, future purchases could buy into the zoning to be, to be mining.
I just don't think you would buy one of these parcels. I don't think that's, that wouldn't make sense to just mine one. It's just not enough.
Yeah, it would be simply buying a whole lot of them, I think.
Yeah.
Um, and it's tough because here we are, um, talking about a potential future application also, right? That we could have all sorts of questions on and or approval criteria and conditions on and such for a gravel operation. Um, but yet we want to be considering those potentials when deciding about this one parcel. Um, I will say that, you know, off the bat, my own opinion is that this piece is it's maybe not the best, but it's, you know, second best compared to this one here of being far enough away from some of the operations, should they actually occur, that, you know, he's, you know, if this owner is getting prime uh, disclosure right now, that he may be building on the edge of a, of a, of a haul road and decides to do it. I, I'm not super opposed to this piece being taken out of the equation for gravel operation. But I think that that's also because, again, I'm looking at it trying to, even though we shouldn't be uh, deciding on a gravel pit operation, and the very thought of a gravel operation taking up this whole entire thing sounds terrible to me as far as it being that huge and that expansive over there and running along this road here and this road here. So I'm, I'm guessing that it's not going to be taking up these, this whole entire section of land here. But so this one piece being taken out, you know, I don't, it doesn't, doesn't bother me too much. You have, it, it is harmonious with everything else around it. You got houses right across the, you know, the way down here that are going down this road to access their houses. You've got these guys over here. So this one piece, I don't feel like would be super detrimental to the whole shebang. Um, if, if we were looking at three pieces that could come to us for a rezone and create this checkerboard pattern, then I think I would be a little bit more concerned, but that doesn't seem to actually be the case. I think all of these are a part of the, the rest of the questionable properties. What are others thoughts on that?
So I actually, after Mr. O'Neil mentioned this, I looked into my Lake County comp plan just to see what the future, you know, prior administrations had seen with the future uses. And this entire IM zone, not just parts of it, is marked off for developed residential as a, as a future land use plan. So I think that's what worth considering, you know, if, if the comp plan's already saying that this land is market or targeted towards residential, if residential is already filling out all of this land surrounding it, you know, we have an owner that's interested in building now. I think the other situation is hypothetical, based on a bunch of other prerequisite things happening for that to even become something that we would hear about, you know. So I, I just think that's where we're dealing with a concrete use, current or near future use that's harmonious with future land use planning for this area. You know, I, I think we need to consider future industrial mining, just because that's what the current zoning is. But I think the particulars of what that mining are. My, my theory when I first look at this is, is when it comes to pass, are we going to be in a position to approve a mine there anyways? In, in several years, once every single one of these lots has been built on, and this is for all intents and purposes, a residential neighborhood, as it's turning into rather quickly. So I just think, you know, this, the other thing is, this is the proper process. So regardless of how they acquired the property, and if it was, they didn't have due diligence or didn't do their diligence, this is the remedy we have in the code to go about solving that and to make the land useful for what they want it to be.
Well, yeah, the applica, application could be exactly the same if somebody said, hey, I'm buying this piece of property with the hopes that I can rezone it. So I think we have to take how they bought it out of the, out of the equation, because no matter how they bought it, they can come forward with this exact same application. Um, and it's up to us to just decide whether the parcel makes sense to be there or not. Um, I have a question from Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, looking at it now, say, we rezone this property, or Lake County rezones this property to residential. What happens in the future for the remaining that is industrial mining? What's going to happen? Because I, I honestly have a company right now. As soon as this estate is settled, this company wants to move forward. They already have the permits for their crushers, all of that. Basically, go to you guys, go through the process, get it done, taken care of. What is the probability that we come to Lake County, want to do this pit for the greater good of Lake County as well as Shafie County? Because we are Shafie County as well. This could help out multiple communities, not just Lake County. What's the probability that it gets shut down because we rezoned one parcel to be residential?
Well, you know, it's, it's hard to make a future prediction of, of what your probability of getting it passed or not is, just because there are so many factors that we have. We, whether it's us, current planning commissioners, or whoever the commissioners are down the road, right, that are going to approve your application. You know, if you're going to ask my very personal opinion and not taking, uh, not, not being the chair of the planning commission, I think my personal opinion is that this parcel would not be the reason you wouldn't get approved. It would be the factor of a whole. It would not be this parcel causing detriment. It would be the whole area being fit for whatever operation you're putting forward um, in front of us. And unfortunately, you know, we can't make that determination without that application being in front of us. And so i- i- in, in no matter whether this parcel was rezoned or not, uh, you know, I think you have the same, you have the same risk or same uh, question as to whether the county is going to, going to want it there, whether your zoned IM or not. Um, and it's all going to, it's all going to be on how it's being run, how big it's going to be, how the trucks are going to get in there, what kind of noise it's going to create. You know, all of those things are going to be factors that get you know, analyzed and determined by whoever's on the board at that time, as to whether or not they think it's appropriate for that area. I, again, personally, wouldn't think that this one parcel is going to create the headache. It's going to be that you're in a residential area anyway. So if residential dings you, it's not going to be this parcel that does it. It's going to be as a whole. But that's, again, my own, my own personal um, opinion about it. But I think that yeah, I mean, unfortunately, we can't give you a good probability on an application that we just don't have the details on.
Okay, yeah, I'm, thank you for that. And it, you know, I, I keep getting, we keep going back to the, it's in a residential neighborhood. The, the reason that my grandfather had this in industrial mining zone ever since nineteen seventy-six was because you can clearly see in the GIS map that there is a road that leads all the way to the highway. There is a gate setup. It's a, just a preset up. It can accommodate four semis wide to enter and access the highway. And that was partially for the Quail Mountain Ski Area Resort, and also partially for this gravel pit to be put in place. So there has been a lot of background in this, and it's taken a lot of years to get to this point. It's just, it never was put into full production. And as soon as we can get settled on some other things, I think we have almost a ninety percent chance, in my opinion, of putting in a gravel, gravel operation and running it full bore.
Okay. Do I have any other comments or discussion amongst our planning commissioners or, and or county commissioners that have any questions, or I guess county commissioner?
No, thank you, Heather. I don't have anything else at this time.
Heather, this is Howard. I have to apologize.
Howard.
Apologize for being late. I had a, that was kind of an emergency this, or a little late morning. And I'd been gone on the highway trying to take care of the friend's problem that he had with the car and all that. So I, I didn't know it was going to take this long. I'm really sorry.
Well, thanks for joining us, Howard.
And I can't get the video to work ever here. But anyway, you got my voice, and that's good enough. You don't need to see my husband's face anyway.
Um, Howard, have you been able to hear any of this discussion? I know you had um, questions for me on this particular application today, and I just didn't know if you were able to hear the discussion on this.
I heard, I heard a bit, you know, I haven't heard a lot, uh, but I, I will, you know, state my, my questions. I remember way back at the Quail Mountain times, actually, and, and that later than that. It, it, Dennis wanted to build a gravel pit in there. And as a result, that's, that's what, it, it was all, the whole thing was Zoom or zoned up. Industrial mining, IM. And my opinion is, I heard Heather say she didn't think one parcel would make a difference. I'd have to differ because I believe that, you know, if we change one, we're going to be changing another. It goes on and on and on. And I'm really, really surprised when I read in the, in the write-up that they, somebody sold it to them. They didn't do their due process. They didn't find out that it was IM in the beginning. And why the people that sold it didn't let them know is IM. I don't know if it was a real estate company or, or whoever, but I think they probably got a good case on going back to somebody, whoever, whoever they bought it from. That's my opinion. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Howard. Uh, Heather, do you mind if I just add a couple more things, uh, from the discussion? Um, I was just to Bryce's, uh, consideration of the comp plan. Bryce, unfortunately, I'm not sure that the amendments, the amendment that we made in two thousand eighteen might be in your copy of the comp plan. Um, but there, some members of the planning commission and of the board of county commissioners will remember that based on an IM rezone, we did do an amendment to the comp plan to say, um, to, to strengthen, um, the thought of, of rezoning IM parcels. Um, maybe that was in reference to a bit of a different geo- geographic location. However, um, we did do an amendment in two thousand eighteen that, uh, did say that we, uh, the planning commission and the board at that time did not support uh, rezones of IM zoned property of twofold, one for the mineral resource that thought, was thought to be an economic strength of the county as well as, as safety. Um, I think those were kind of the two reasons for considering or wanting to put that language in there. And, um, then I, I do think that, uh, you know, I've heard some different thoughts, and I do um, at least think that a remedy, and unfortunately, we're seeing it more and more, not just here, but in some other IM parcels that are currently listed, um, in the historic mining district, um, being advertised right now as, uh, simply rezone it. And I think that that is, uh, you know, detrimental. I think that, um, a preferred method of purchasing property is, is absolutely making sure that you do your due diligence on the front end to make sure, uh, you know, a simple thing like, can I build on it? Is it buildable? Um, seems to be a, a very basic amount of due diligence. And so just, thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments from planning commissioners? Well, um, at this point, I mean, if there's not any more comments, uh, it would be somebody ready to make a motion on a decision one way or the other, and then we can have discussion on that motion if such motion is seconded.
Right, Heather, this one isn't as straightforward.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a toughie. I think I probably still align a lot with what Bryce had said earlier. And, uh, yeah, I mean, again, if you take out whether or not somebody should or shouldn't have bought it, I think that that keeps getting brought up, but that's not part of the discussion and or part of the decision. Um, I don't think we can make a decision to rezone it because we feel bad for him. But also don't think we can make a decision not to do it because we want somebody else to, you know, own up for a mistake that they made. So I think it, we gotta take it out. We gotta take that conversation piece out of this. Um, it needs to solely be on whether or not it's appropriate for this area, for this one piece to move into the Southern zoning district of the recreational, or it should stay in its grouping of mining industrial.
And I would just to back that point about the comp plan, I understand the concerns with setting a precedent, especially with IM zones. I think this came up and has become really sensitive because the other IM zone that was rezoned was literally Oprah Mine Shaft that they had to fill in on the east side contiguous with the entire east side historic mining district. So you know, I think it's interesting. I agree that the IM zone is that area especially, there's a lot more considerations going on. But this nine zone, eight zone, or eight parcel zone seems like it was put in because of one person that had disproportionate amount of political influence at that time. And, you know, I, I think it's, we have an opportunity to redefine the future rather than continue to retread what was a plan at one time that hasn't come to fruition in forty-five years.
And that's also then looking at this whole parcel as being rezoned, like that also expands past this individual.
Absolutely. And I was just gonna say, like, the, the Murphys are going through the proper process. I, I read the code, you know, it has to be over a three acre parcel to apply and, and has to go into a proper size of the RC. You know, unfortunately, that doesn't apply to that other parcel. The U parcel on the corner, that's two point nine six acres. Right? So that's, that's not eligible for this same code process. So, you know, I, I don't know if I think this is just, this is a situation we have to solve now, and then there's a lot of different potential ifs that'll come along afterwards that we have to address when they come up as well.
Bryce, I do have to, um, say that you're incorrect in the fact that there was a this disproportional amount of loyalty going to Dennis O'Neal. Because at that time with his, his plan of a ski hill, he was really not in favor with hardly anybody. Uh, and so he didn't get any special favors. So I don't want that to have any influence on this.
I guess I, I, I looked at that map. I see that there's not remnants of a former gravel pit on that parcel. And then I see that there are homes surrounding, uh, or homes nearby.
Well, Heather, it looks as though the discussion is occurring, whether there's a motion on the table or not. So.
Okay. I think sometimes we have to do that in order to get a motion to come to fruition. I think that's pretty common with us.
Yeah. Would you like me to read one of the motions and just see what happens?
Well.
If somebody can, somebody can.
Sure. I mean, I'd like to give, uh, one more chance to our planning commission to, you know, I'd rather somebody pick which direction they'd like to lead us, lead us in um, as far as motion goes. And then if they'd like you to read that, that motion for them, I think that's helpful.
Okay.
Do I have anybody who would like Paul to read one of the motions that are in the staff report?
Yes, please. I don't have the motions in front of me. I apologize.
And Bryce, are you asking him to read the motion that would be the motion of approval or denial?
Motion of approval, please.
Not a very complicated motion. I move the planning commission recommend approval of file number twenty-one dash fifteen, a rezoning of parcel ten, tract fifteen, EE Hill Estates from IM industrial mining to RC recreational to the board of county commissioners with the following findings. One, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the Lake County comprehensive plan. And two, that the proposed rezoning bears a reasonable relationship to the welfare of the community and that there has been a change in the conditions of the neighborhood that supports the requested rezoning. So moved.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Do we have further discussion on the motion? Okay, I'm gonna go through a roll call vote, please. Um, I have Bryce Ehrlich.
Aye.
Abby Dahman.
Aye.
Howard Trips.
No.
Aaron Palin.
I don't know. Um, aye.
And Heather Lind, aye. Okay, the motion carries. Uh, the next step is that it goes to the county commissioners. This is our recommendation to them to approve. And they will make a decision from there. Okay.
That, that'll be, Heather, that'll be just next Monday.
Next Monday. Thank you. Okay. And I don't know if you can share that agenda again, and sorry, I didn't leave mine open. Great, thank you. Um, all right. So next is file dash twenty-one dash twelve and file twenty-one dash thirteen, Tabor Star's major subdivision, the sketch plan and the PUD. And this one I think is Ann presenting.
Thank you, Heather. Um, so yes, files twenty-one, twelve and twenty-one thirteen are the Tabor Star Major Subdivision and PUD Sketch Plan Review. Um, Tabor Star is a plot of land, um, a little over seven acres located just west of the intermediate school, um, and west of McQuethy Drive and south of Countywood Four. Tabor Star entered into and went through a PDU, PUD process and sub major subdivision process in circa about two thousand and six. However, um, that approval lapsed, and so the plan before us now is substantially different as well, um, from that original plan. Um, few of the elements remain the same, uh, but the current plan is, um, for a exclusively residential, uh, development. This parcel was created by subdivision exemption in nineteen ninety-four and, and by Lake County. It was actually used to be owned by Lake County. And the developer purchased it in the same year from Lake County. How, very extensive history of this, uh, property. Um, in fact, it, it at one point was being considered as a, uh, site for a medical facility for Dr. Lisa. But then another site obviously was found. So a lot of history on the record about this parcel. And, uh, so I digress. Currently, it is a twenty unit subdivision master plan um, with three, uh, lots, uh, being donated or dedicated for deed restriction um, in the overall conceptual plan of the subdivision. Um, there is about thirty-one percent of the, uh, area designed to be private open space um, to incorporate some kind of, uh, community use of either garden, greenhouse, um, or, or just maybe a, a, a fire pit and, and stone patio area, um, for the residents. The, uh, utilities that will serve the development are Park the Water, uh, where we've received the will serve letter from. Uh, Leveille Sanitation, uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that, uh, coming up. Excel Energy will be the gas and electric provider. Um, but Steamer Star is going to embrace um, and encourage designs and construction elements that will implement both passive and active solar foresight, uh, excuse me, forethought communication is the current wireless internet. Haven't heard of them before. Um, and Central Colorado Telecom has a desire to install a fiber optic cable in the area. Obviously, there's a good accessibility, uh, the, um, uh, developer is also proposing a ba- uh, bike and pedestrian pathway um, through the development to increase connectivity and further some of the goals of the comp plan. The lighting plan is consistent with dark sky philosophies and compliance. Um, and so we will ask that they memorialize that within their CCNR so that it, it in, um, goes into the home, uh, construction as well. Um, I alluded to, uh, further discussion on the sanitary requirements of this subdivision and um, during the sketch review, we received information from Leveille Sanitation that they, um, will not be able to support any portion of infrastructure that is maintained by anyone other than the uh, district. So how this affects, uh, Tabor's star is that there are a certain amount of the lots within the development that would need to be serviced by a lift station. Lift stations are not something that the, uh, sanitation district supports. Um, so this is the, causing the need for the developer to look at a phasing plan for, uh, the development and bringing online the lots that can be served by a gravity fed system into Leveille Sanitation. Um, and then consideration of plating the rest of the subdivision either once a solution and resolution can be found with, uh, Leveille Sanitation or, um, perhaps allowing the parcel to, um, go into open space or, or actually a separate parcel. Um, privately owned parcel. Um, but the first phasing will identify and address the, uh, lots that can be serviced through the district through parcel. Um, the PUD aspect of the application, um, that's before you today largely is, uh, because uh, due to asks of variations in roadway design and densities and dimensional standards. The roadway designs have been reviewed at this, uh, sketch phase by both engineering and Pub Works. And we do have some comments and some areas that we want the developer to look at, uh, prior to preliminary. All of those can, uh, items are listed, um, both in the staff report and then in the conditions that I will go into at the end of, uh, my discussion. The, um, density bonus basically that is afforded the development due to the variation in the deviation summary of, uh, density and dimensional standards create sustainable, um, and effective, uh, development. This is complies and is in harmony with the comp plan. This is definitely a way that um, is identified within those master planning documents as well as it's a sustainable and effective way for developers to bring development online. The one area, um, in those allowances that staff saw that um, we, I would encourage the developer to spend just a little bit of time and, and explain probably in better detail than I'm going to. And that is the variation, um, in the height allowance. So currently height is, um, the maximum allowable height under the code is thirty-five feet. This application is considering raising that to forty-five feet. So, uh, my initial thought as, as I was reviewing this was that rough lines were being contemplated at, at forty-five feet. Um, this is a wooded area, but I, I was wondering, and I thought that it would be important for the planning commission and the board to know what kind of visual impacts that has on the view shed in that area. However, after I spoke, um, in a little bit greater detail with the developer, I discovered that that, um, potential intrusion is a very limited amount of space. It is not rough lines that, that is driving the, um, ask for that additional height variance. It is based on, um, staircases that will aid top floor patios. Um, so we're talking about a surface area significantly less than the intrusion of a full roof. Um, and again, I will let the applicant kind of talk about that a little bit. Um, I think it'll be important for that to be elaborated on in detail within the PUD guide, which is the zoning guide that, um, we play. which is the zoning guide that replaces in part some of the land development code. And so if there is an allowance for something higher than thirty-five feet, and it is a minor intrusion into the view shed or potential view shed, then maybe it's not quite as significant as first thought. The application was reviewed by the following agencies: Lake County Public Health, Lake County Public Works, Lake County School District, Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue, the Leadville Lake County Housing Coalition, Parkville Water, Leadville Sand, Lake County Recreation Department, and S H Engineering, which is the county's contracted engineering firm. And Jackie Littlepage from Environmental Health had nothing but favorable comments. There were no conditions, obviously, with the absence of septic systems and wells. It was a little bit easier lift for that environmental review. The only thing that was noted on that in those details was a hope that within this housing, maybe there would be some supportive housing opportunities found. Michael Irwin, Director of Pub Works, aligned quite a bit with the engineering reviews. So within those comments in the staff report and then the suggested condition, there's some fine tuning that is being asked of the developer to go in in regards to snow storage, additional guest parking, the reduction in the roadway size eliminates, to a certain degree, any on-street parking. The parking is contemplated more for the property owners and a little less for guest parking, so parking pad areas were a suggestion to accommodate that. There's several other areas. There was Lot Five, which was a privately owned lot that depicts snow storage, which seems problematic for maintenance. And so there's further discussion within all of the engineering comments, and then again aligns with conditions that are suggested by staff for approval. This was referred to the school district, so it's codified that there needs to be a land dedication or a fee in lieu to the school district. They are in discussion of the fee matrix versus land dedication. And the initial amount contemplated all twenty lots, giving consideration to three, the three deed restricted lots. They were not going to charge for those, as well as the existing lot. Lot number five, as many of, everybody may be aware, is where the office is currently built off of McQuethy. And so they gave consideration for those four and charged for the other sixteen. However, now that we are at, knowing that we are going to be looking at a plating in part of the twenty lots, then we can apply that matrix to how many ever come online at the time of final plat, and that'll be the amount due, and I have sent that notice over to the school district for their consideration to make sure that that aligns properly with their requirements. Fire has reviewed the plan as well, and they do have some concerns, but they again have been addressed within the engineering concerns. But overall, there's ample water to support fire rescue and in the area, as well as we had a discussion about that increased height. And they did not see, you know, if it's in those small staircase areas or something like that, even if there was an additional floor, which there's not, but that's what we potentially looked at. They said that all of their fire apparatus would be sufficient to be able to aid for fire response. The Leadville Housing Coalition, this was sent to the housing coordinator who responded with a thoughtful piece about making sure that if anything within the subdivision comes online as a deed restricted unit, to consider the impact that homeowner fees have on keeping those affordable. So that was shared with the developer, and it's in the report. And very important that if anything within this development does come online is with affordability intention and deed restriction that those homeowner fees can have a significant effect on that housing. Parkville Water and Leadville Sand both have will serve letters. We do have the glitch, or the developer has the glitch, that the lift station and the portion of the infrastructure that they propose to be the homeowner's responsibility is not acceptable with the Parkville District, or excuse me, the Leadville Sanitation District. Amber McGee with Lake County Recreation. She did note, so subdivisions are required to do a public land dedication or a fee in lieu. She just wanted to contemplate that maybe a fee in lieu or some other solution might be more applicable as there are so many recreational amenities so close to this subdivision. So she did not think that perhaps priority would be any kind of land dedication of public use in the subdivision. The engineering review and discussion, I'm not going to go into a great detail, it's very technical, but it has reviewed all of the intricacies at the, at this conceptual stage to direct the preliminary stage into an acceptable path for submittal. So the, I think there are a couple aspects that I haven't talked about that I think are important to point out, and then I will give recommended, recommendations, suggestions for conditions of approval. As staff went through and looked for consistency with the comp plan, I certainly found it in the density bonus. The developing close to the districts and the periphery of the city. Those are all strong elements of the vision of the comp plan. However, there was another remaining item in there, and that's diversity of housing. Based on the models of all the houses that are being suggested for this development, they are relatively similar, maybe not as similar in design as affordability. And so it is just a talking point at this point that we would like to share with the developer for consideration, as well as planning commission and the board, that the developer consider diversity in housing. As we look at the developer bringing a phase one, the phase one will not be able to contemplate the three lots that were being donated or dedicated for deed restriction. So the loss of those are significant and unfortunate. And so suggestion of considering a multifamily as one of the lots or townhomes or some kind of, with the deed restriction attached to it as just a thought. As developers looking at different options. Certainly appreciative of the fact that the initial plan highlighted those deed restricted units. And so now that we find out that those aren't available, perhaps something else might be appropriate. And one of the other items was that the comp plan, when you look to the future land use of this area, you will note that it is mapped as reclamation redevelopment. And so this reminded staff that when the community garden was, CUP was processed, that parcel went through a phase one and a phase two. It went through about brown field ground and had arsenic remediation, largely due, I believe, to two factors. One was the railroad proximity to this parcel, as well as some smelting activity in the area. Also, the community field, it is staff's recollection that that also went through some environmental testing. So because if you look at that map, how intentionally this is mapped as that kind of area that is defined by either industrial or mining remnants of activity, staff did approach the developer and ask what the history of the parcel was, or had they had any testing done. Some soil analysis has been done onsite, but it was more done for gauging development of foundations and roadways and not so much as looking for contaminants. However, the kids' first program did come in and do on the lead evaluation in the area, and based on the sampling, no, none of that sampling hit the threshold for remediation need for lead. However, there are other contaminants, obviously, besides lead. So staff just wants to lift it up to the planning commission and the board that potentially there is the need for at least a phase one, which is, a phase one is just going through the record and seeing if there is any evidence of any kind of industrial or mining history that could have negatively impacted this property, which would cause the need for soil sampling, which is phase two. This was shared with the applicant. I do have the results now from Kids First that the lead was present, but definitely at least want to lift this up to the planning commission and to the board that potentially there is some review that needs to be performed on the property. And I think other than the conditions of approval, I'm going to let the applicant speak so that I don't take another hour of time. So staff suggested eleven different conditions of approval. Number one just refers to the comments from the engineering. Number two is a request to address the reclamation redevelopment that I just spoke about. Number three, that the applicant will work with Lake County Public Works to address any of their issues that they talked about, such as road design and snow storage. And number four, that the applicant elaborate in better detail in the PUD guide about the forty-five foot maximum allowance for height. Number five, due to the phasing plan, if the roadway either needs to be fully platted at the time of the first phase or an alternative that supports snow maintenance as well as fire response. Number six is, I should have talked about this just a little bit. There is nothing on the record about the easement. The current entrance into Tabor Star is an easement over county property. There is no memorialization or recording of an easement agreement. And I, staff also checked with the developer, and he has no record of one either. So that needs to be negotiated, as well as the emergency access, as noted on the sketch plan plat, that is access again over county owned property. So both of those need to be negotiated, as well as determining whether or not the current entrance is the best location for the subdivision, as noted by the engineer and public works. They both have a little bit different idea about this, but code calls for a greater distance than where that entrance is located. This triggers the need for a traffic study to help to decide where the best alignment for the access points for the subdivision are. This is something that the developer is completely cognizant of and is suggested as a condition of approval. Number seven, for the developer to consider more about public land dedication, fee in lieu, or some kind of affordable housing allocation or deed restriction. If they will consider the things that we've talked about in the staff report and anything else that may be in hearing today as part of their consideration for preliminary submittal. And number eight, again aligns with this exact thing, and for them to consider the comp plan goal of diversity in housing, which might drive some of that discussion. And then number nine is just making the payment of the school land dedication fee. And number ten, requiring dark sky within the covenants, the CCNRs, so that property owners will adhere to those same standards for future development. And then all statements made by the applicant in hearing. And that's everything I have, unless you have questions.
Thank you, Ann. That was super helpful. I think before we get into questions, I'll go ahead and let Jack make any additional comments and/or presentation that he would like to do, and then we can open up for commissioner questions.
Thanks, Ann. Nice presentation, and thanks commissioners, both county and planning and zoning. And staff, Paul, don't want to forget you. And I would really like to thank staff because they've been very helpful in helping me down this path. So yeah, I might just go through some of Ann's comments. Looking at S H Engineering, there's a reason why we are proposing a twenty-foot wide paved roadway in a forty-five-foot right of way. Just because narrower roads enhance slower speeds. And also will be room, since we have twelve and a half foot wide shoulders, so to speak, for, within that right of way, there would be room for some off-street parking. And so those will be addressed, I guess, for your requirements or in the preliminary presentation. It was a shock to me to see that somebody took their crayons and painted my parcel brown, indicating reclamation and redevelopment. We did have this tested back when lead was a big scare around here, when the EPA was sending out letters, and we're way below thresholds imposed by the EPA. So we haven't even ever considered this, other than urban residential parcel. And when we built the house here, there's a lot of clay as well as gravel soils here. And so I've been solicited a number of times to sell some of the clay, just because people can use it for their projects. So anyway, we will do whatever is required to identify soil concerns. Oh, the height, I guess my question is why do you limit it to thirty-five feet? It's just been a restriction forever. Years ago, I asked the fire department, is as far as your ladders extend, and they said thirty-five feet was not their requirement. It was an arbitrary number, and I think it's a somewhat of a universal number too, in many communities, of thirty-five feet. And so this location, if you're familiar with it, has great mountain views. And so the houses that I included, the designs that I included in your packet, also show rooftop decks. And those are still within the thirty-five foot, but there is the opportunity, one more, one more rooftop. And in all, I'm asking why I wanted forty-five feet is to have a sheltered staircase and a sheltered. Let me describe it best as a kitchenette, you know, put a refrigerator and a bar sink up there on the rooftop for barbecues and et cetera. So that's the reason in per Ann's description, yeah, it's not going to be full roof over the full footprint of the house at that forty-five foot height. Let me jump to utilities, because it took me a day to get a will serve letter from Parkville Water. It took me actually two days to get a letter from Excel Energy, which in itself was a real surprise, but there's a very cooperative engineer there that responded quickly. And so it only took me three months to get a will serve letter from Leadville Sanitation. And however, after those three months, they sent a letter to my attorney. Let's see, I got the will serve letter April twenty-eighth. April twenty eighth. I've got their engineering approval from sanitation on May fifth. And then in July, they had a meeting unbeknownst to me where they decided that. Low pressure sewer systems would not be allowed within their jurisdiction. And they worded it such that where we are proposing one central line serves. Eleven lots. That the H O A would own that line. They said if each individual property must have their own line. In order to tap into their their service. And so despite what their engineer recommended, that was their current resolution. As of this morning, I received a letter from. An email from my attorney from the sanitation district's attorney saying they are reconsidering all that. So at the at this point in time, at this hearing, I have color coded. The project which Anne can put up on the screen, I hope. In due process, in due time, but those actually it's turned out to be ten lots that could not be gravity fed. So. Those ten lots. I color coded three are in the inner perimeter. On the Kerrigan Drive that goes east west direct. On the inner side would have become if if I could not get low pressure, if I could not get sewer service. They would become open space and the lots on the outer perimeter, which are colored green. Would just become one large remaining parcel undevelopable. Undeveloped parcel perhaps for a future multifamily or townhomes or what have you. So. All right. Yes, that's me exercising. Okay, there you go. So should we not be able to sanitation sewer for those yellow lots? They would become open space. And then the green lots and would just become one. Large parcel that I would retain ownership of or sell separately, whatever. It's it's some future date. However, I'm highly encouraged as of this morning. That Leadville sanitation is coming around to twenty first century technology. And it's it's proven to work. It's proven to work in Alaska where they can hardly dig underground. And so gravity is always an issue there. So anyway, the non-colored part is I've divided in I call I am calling phase one. So I'm hoping to engineer the whole parcel. The roadway would be part of phase one that would just continue. The property. And Anne's right and I and I and I sent you an aerial photo about a half hour before the meeting started. That I just found in my records that showed the old access. So. Up in the upper right hand corner of the parcel lot five is where my office and my home currently. Exists. And so. We used to have an entrance into this property farther to the north of McWethy Drive. So you've got the community park entrance into McWethy Drive. Previously, before the rodeo grounds had a little dirt road into their rodeo grounds. And then I had probably at least seventy five to a hundred yards to the north. And back in the day when I first proposed this, the county building inspector and. Trying to think who the road and bridge guy was back in the oh six. I don't. Not sure if it was, it was Brad. Brad was around, at least in the latter part of that. But anyway, they felt it was too dangerous to have access directly off my property and it was their suggestion. Though it was not memorialized that I just share the access with the community, well, with the rodeo grounds. At that time, it was just the rodeo grounds. So that's the history there. I am. As some of you know, excuse me, as some of you know, I am active with the. Housing Coalition Subcommittee on Policy for both the city and in the county. And and so I am sensitive to the need of housing in this community. It's ridiculous. I find personally as a home builder that it's hard to find to build a property under four hundred thousand dollars. And that's in my estimation, not a starter home price. Now, I would love to get it in half. I know previous developers have touted the fact that they're coming online with two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand. Still a lot of money, but in this. Financial times, it's an affordable start apparently. And so, but they're having our time. Any less than three fifty. So. It's just not builders. It's it's a lot of. Lot of factors that drive the affordable housing crisis. So, you know, I am sensitive to it. I'm encouraged once that. Sanitation. Promulgates their rules and regs on low pressure sewer systems. We'll be back in business with dedicating three lots to that cause. And of course, as Anne mentioned, we are putting a pedestrian bike path parallel to McWethy. And I hope that answers the community concern request that we give some consideration to recreation, I think. Connective paths are a major component in. So I'm trying to be sensitive to all parts, but at the same time, I'm. Needing to weigh costs. Costs are crazy, you know, paving costs, just gravel costs. As Mr. Unhill pointed out, you know, that. We're in need of, we're running out of gravel if you're hard as it is to believe, but. And then I am, I even before I knew you guys were sensitive to dark skies. I was totally sensitive to dark skies. I'm also sensitive to. Solar active and passive solar designs. And I was hoping to use part of this, one of my, one of the open spaces, I think it's called outlet. The. Outlet A down at the far corner. Anyway, down here in this corner, I would like to put a solar garden in, but I'm told it's not feasible for just twenty residences. So anyway, that. Will entail further exploration. Think, let's see, the history of the parcel. Mr. Tritz will know this, but before I purchased the parcel from the county. And and I did, I was talking to Dr. Lisa at one point in time, who's exploring, you know, her own medical facility. But this was designated that the county acquired it from the United States Forest Service. This was gonna, this area was going to be the entrance way to the turquoise lake recreation area. And so turquoise lake took off, but having a forest service office on this corner. The entrance to turquoise lake road just never came to fruition. So I ended up acquiring it. I believe that's an overview from my point of view. So I'm, you know. Anxious to hear your concerns and hopefully we can resolve them. Because I would like to see this fly, but there are our constraints. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack.
I just wanted to mention that aerial picture wasn't attached. I went to try to find it, to put it on the screen and. And I saw the email, but the picture wasn't on there.
Man, I'm gonna have to fire someone.
I have just a couple of questions and I know that obviously not all of the things have to be sorted through right now, but. When you talk about the potential of the deed restricted units. What kind of deed restrictions are you talking about? Are you talking about? Deed restrictions as far as income deed restrictions, deed restrictions as in they have to work in the county, all of the above, like what kind of, what are you looking at there?
I'm really open to those ideas. I am looking at, you know, I figured a dual income. Couple could could at a hundred and twenty percent of AMI really afford one of the regular parcels. But. So. One thought I had was maybe give one to the county, one to the city and one to the schools. Or, you know, some, some of the nonprofits or whatever, but again, I'm not conversant in. Deed restrictions. I am conversant in knowing that there's a community need and I want to help, but I don't know exactly what shape that'll take. And I would certainly. Solicit your input on those ideas.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think there's, you'll get a gazillion opinions about that. So have.
We'll make it.
I had a question about, and I was just gonna see if I could share it here, but. You, when you're talking about the rooftop top decks, I'm a little bit confused because the drawings that I have, like they show a deck, but it's not quite on the roof line. So it seems like if those decks were covered, they still would be below the roof line. So.
Okay, so some of those conceptuals.
Yep.
Have a garage in the bottom level and a bedroom. The next level has some bedrooms, but primarily living, the kitchen dining. Living area and in one plan has a bedroom. And by the way, there's both two, two story homes and three story homes. And the three story homes go on the outer perimeter. So their back would be to McWethy Drive. And down the north side of the property, all facing the mountains because the project, project is oriented towards the mountains. The mountain views. And so, and then the one, the highest we go is right. The roof pitch is at thirty five feet, but instead of having a roof over that whole level. We truncate it and you can walk out onto an open rooftop deck with living, you know, like the living room. Dining room below.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna open these one by one.
Okay. Okay.
That's the wrong. I mean, that is the right button. I need to open it in a different.
Okay, okay.
Program. Okay, just so that we can.
Okay. So you've got the garage on the lower level. Go up a level. That's the second story and that's. Living dining kitchen and maybe a bedroom. Some plans have a bedroom in the back in the towards McWethy. So the. And then so there's, there's, let's just say. In rough numbers, ten feet. At the the living room level, you're ten feet off the ground. And then go up ten more feet. So you're now twenty feet off the ground where that you're standing on the deck. And so you're twenty, maybe twenty two feet off off the ground. And then you go up another fifteen feet. Well, you know, eight feet for the ceiling height. And then another seven feet of roof pitch. It's a lower roof pitch there on that particular design. These conceptual designs, that all the houses are going to be narrowed. I believe twenty four feet is the widest. But is the lots are minimum with a fifty feet. So minus twenty four, we got twenty six. So we got thirteen foot setbacks, though I only, I think. And so. Nonetheless, so when you're standing on that roof, you're basically twenty twenty two feet when you stand on that roof deck, excuse me. When you're standing there, you're twenty twenty two feet off the ground. And so that particular design is right at thirty five foot. So now, if we wanted to increase those heights or more importantly, if we wanted to go put a roof. A stairwell where that bedroom is, where the where the roof is, that would become level. And and I would need just a little shelter for the stairwell and the kitchenette. And then across the street, I forget the name, maybe it's the Yukon. It's it's just a two story house because we want the three story houses on the perimeter overlooking the two story houses. So not to impede anyone's view and their. Deck on the rear of the house, that upper right hand photo is. It would be just a walkout and typically it'd be a deck, but we do have living space below. So it's. It in essence is both a roof or the living below and a deck for the. Outdoor barbecues and entertaining.
So where does the forty five foot come in to play?
Back on that south paw drawing. Forty five just gives me that allowance of if we want to increase the height, if we want to put the deck up at the ten twenty. About the twenty eight foot level. That would still give me seventeen feet of floor space and roof space. Basically, I'm popping up another level. For phenomenal views and. To Anne's point, well, really her question about whose view am I obstructing? Drivers that come around the curve from turquoise lake road out toward Sixth Street, I'll be blocking. And then. School kids who aren't supposed to be looking out those windows anyway. And in fact, there's more brick wall than it is windows over on the the western side of the middle or the intermediate school. So really, to my point, I'm not obstructing anyone's view.
Jack, this is Howard. Explain again the staircase and the roof you want to put on the staircase. Can you point it out on the south south farm with your arrow?
Heather's got the arrow.
I can do my best.
Okay, so if we were to go, yeah, okay, so take that that right hand floor plan. Down, down, down one level, the actual floor plan, not the. Go to the right now, the one to the right. So that's currently what I've got going. That's going to push thirty five feet. Now take that stairwell on the upper part of the drawing. Yeah, there. So let's just say we spin it around again. So my, I would want my roof over that little rectangular area, including the bathroom. Yeah, up above. Right up above that, we would just pop that up Howard. So one quarter of that footprint would be forty five foot tall.
Hey, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else a builder in the group?
No, but that was, that was a lot with that.
Thank you. So I'd want a roof over that section. And then a little kitchenette over, over right on top of the bathroom, which would be perfect because we'd have want water up there.
And I'm sorry. Commissioners have question?
So why would deed restriction currently not work? I'm sorry if I missed that.
Oh, based on. Abby, do you have a copy of the plat? Okay, so there's. All those lots to the west that are down gradient cannot be served by. Gravity fed sewer. So that currently the. Sanitation district objected to my, all those green and yellow lots that Anne showed earlier. Were would not be able to be gravity fed. So here we're going along all happy and I'm. Thinking I'm doing a community service by recognizing the need for affordable housing. And they sort of pulled the rug out of up from underneath us. Saying that, hey, we're not gonna allow you to do those gravity feed systems. And again, as of this morning, they're investigating them. There's no promises, but I'm optimistic. That I don't. I went to their meeting last Wednesday. And someone apparently after me. Had worked closely with their engineer and had proposed a low pressure grinder pump system. So after they told me no, again, they apparently became convinced. That perhaps there's something more to it that they should at least revisit the topic.
So it's not that you're, 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 you're just not building at all potentially if.
Not that would all just be, you know, the the yellow, the three on the inside. Not, that would all just be, you know, the, the yellow, the three on the inside of the road would become open space adjacent to the current open space proposed. And then the other, the other ones on the outside perimeter would just become one, one parcel for, you know.
Heather, will you just go around the deed restricted ones, the, the ones that, that he had proposed? Yeah. So those are, I mean, those are the ones that if he doesn't plat those because he can't get support from the sanitation district. So they, they wouldn't come into play at this time and, and potentially, but hopefully maybe there's a new answer from Leadville San or a new workaround with them so that those will come on. But at the, you know, the writing of the staff report and as of today, those three would not be supported by sanitation. So they couldn't get platted at this time.
And lots seven through sixteen would not be supported either.
Right.
Yeah. All right. Thanks for that. I, I'm sorry I missed it.
So just to clarify, we're reviewing the sketch plan, like the potential, this is what the developer would like to do. But if that weren't possible because of the sanitation stuff, would we have to review this again? Or would it just be kind of?
So you can plat, you can plat it in phases. So he would take phase one to preliminary and final plat. When he's ready to do phase two, he can take it to preliminary and final plat.
But I think you guys reviewing, not us, correct?
No, that'll be, we'll bring it to you.
Okay.
We'll bring the preliminary to you.
Okay.
So the, so the only issue, which is an issue, but I'm not really sure what else to call it right now, is with phasing to that point, Bryce, is that a developer in any of these developments could build out, do, do preliminary and final plat with phase one and then never get to phase two or three. So we need to make sure when we're reviewing these types of applications, that we're happy with phase one also being on its own. Because you may not, and especially in this instance, when he's got the sanitation issues, phase two and three, or five and six, or whatever, could just never come to fruition. So it's, it's important that although, like for instance, the affordable housing piece is awesome. But and it, and it's a really good incentive to be like, oh yeah, we really like what you're doing, but that's phased down the road. So phase one is the pieces of phase one are what, as far as right now, we're approving, we're, we're approving the idea of this development and the, and the idea that he can have it, he can go forward in these phases. And do we, do we like the phases as they are being proposed today? And do we like the potential of approving the height variances and this, and the lot variances and things like that? And then it gets a lot more detail. Once, once he has a, a yes on that, then he goes forward and does a whole lot more detail work that than in preliminary plat. We're doing a little bit more formal approval from there. But things like, I, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ann. I don't think like we could go back at preliminary plat and change our mind about setbacks and height variance changes if we approved it in sketch plan.
So actually, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Sorry.
Um, so preliminary will have a rezone application associated with it as well. So that's actually a preliminaries when we will approve the zoning portion of this. So there could be, you know, that, that'll be at the point that we have approved the preliminary, all of the engineering and design as well as the new zoning. So P O D zoning will replace urban residential. And that'll be the setbacks and the height and, and density and, and any other variations that, that he wants to propose from the land development code. So that rezone will be at the same time as preliminary.
And I might just add, if I may, two things. One, to your point, Heather, when I had to really phase it because of sanitation, I kept the road as proposed in the project because whether it never go, if it goes to phase two, we're all set. If it doesn't ever go to phase two, we're still set as far as egress to entrances. So.
Yep.
I agreed that that should be done. And, and also I would like to know now, I mean, I, I don't want to spend a ton on engineering. It's a very expensive proposition. And then you restrict my setbacks or my heights or, you know, that. And the height is really just for these lots, one through four and number six at the moment for phase one. And then seven, well, se- seven, really, seven through ten are the, the others. It's just the outer perimeter lots that would, that I would want the forty-five foot on height variation or variance. But I, that disturbs me, Ann, that to think that, oh, I, I get along, get going along. Because we got the green lighted sketch plan and then it, it, preliminary, it's like, we changed the game. I don't think that's right.
Well, I think that, you know, and, and this will be up to the planning commission and the board. But I think that this evening or, or through the sketch process and, and then next week, I think the only thing that we're calling attention to is, is the height. I don't see where, unless we find an engineering reason. I don't, you know, I don't want to speak for the planning commission, but the staff report is written to support all of the proposed zoning changes. The ones that we've seen, I still don't have a table of uses. So there's still outline things in your zoning that we're going, that you're going to need to address, or you're going to have to point back to the land development code as, as the reference for the things that you're not changing. So we have to tie that in as a rezone application because that's what P U D is. So that is codified to be at the next step. But I think at this point, the staff report is written and, and the suggestion that's given, unless there's some, something that comes out of the discussion tonight with the planning commission and then with the board. And the only thing that's suggested that needs some fine tuning is, is for you to better elaborate on the height. But we provided evidence that, that maybe what you're suggesting is consistent. And then that you'll hear from the board tonight if they think, or the planning commission, if, if they think that that's in line as well.
That's fair. Thank you.
Um, do I have any other questions for the applicant from our planning commission or county commissioner?
Heather, I, I don't have a question on the actual building or the layout or the heights. But just a general question about, you mentioned the, the bike trail in front on by McWhethy. Yeah. Okay, um, I would, I just want to bring this up so people all have an idea what we're really looking at in the long run with these bike trails. We hope to have this bike trail going down County Road Four from the curve there on McWhethy all the way down to at least Baby Dough Drive. And we got the half, part of it paved and because, and because of the, the bonehead, the planning and zoning made in the past, we don't have the other half paved. Unfortunately, that was a big mistake we all made. But getting back to Jack's case, you know, the ideal situation is a bike trail, like I think I heard him say that in front of his billion, in front of his project going on over alongside the community park on over to the Mineral Bell Trail. And it would be nice if that eventually would curve around down Baby Dough Drive and we would get the permission of the dioceses to get through that area. And to provide a way of transportation on the bike trail from the kids that live out in that direction as well as at the intermediate school. And someday when the county gets rich, we'll have an overpass down there on Highway twenty-four to Dutch Henry. But anyway, I, I would, I would like to have that just brought up, maybe not part of this plan, but just something to think about.
Thanks, Howard. It is, you know, along our property, parallel with McWhethy, it's over four hundred, just over four hundred feet that we're proposing an eight-foot wide paved pedestrian slash bike trail. And I agree with you about going around the corner on the Catholic cemetery property. There's already a footpath there that is used for foot races and just, you know, general use. Yeah, it'd be nice to see, maybe we could take a collection up with the deceased and get that.
Good idea, Jack. I'll, I'll go with you. You can hold the hat. I rea- I really, I really think it's important to get the bicycles off of County Road Four as much as we can for safety. It's getting worse and worse. More, more people driving, more people biking, and it's a bad combination.
You know, I'm out of place saying this, but I would wish you had made Westwood go to that side of the road rather than to the north side of County Road Four. Because you're right, it's a dangerous, dangerous road for pedestrians and bicyclists, especially at that curve.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to. It sounds like there was something with, uh, I don't know, it sounds like when they talked to the county, that the county wanted it on that side of the road for some reason. But I feel like that intersection at McWhethy and Tenth is terrible too, or whatever you're calling that extension. But. So it, um, back to sketch plan and, and approving the concept here. Does anybody have any additional comments or questions for Jack? Or in general, before we close public hearing on it? Erin, go ahead.
Connection to Leadville Sanitation, is that a coverage of this development? Is that being asked of the other users? How, how, for it not being allowed and then being allowed? Are like, how does this work?
The, the, right now, Leadville Sanitation has, has a drive going down, right down my driveway, right in front. You can see on the plan, Heather, if you can run a, your arrow up and down just to the right of that line, you'll see the easement, the sewer easement.
Oh, yeah.
Sand, sand, sand. So that's the sewer line. So ten of the properties, well, my house already is on the sanitation line. So the nine additional new lots are gra- are able to be gravity-fed. Oh, I thought that was my dog barking. But anyway, and so the other ten would not be, they need a low-pressure sewer system that's a grinder pump. So it's all pumped up into the, into their main line. And, and so that's, that's the, the rub with the sanitation district. But I'm, I'm really optimistic that they're gonna start adopting this technology.
Well, my question is, does this development pay for that? Or is it being adopted into the whole district?
Oh, no, no. We're in the district, but no, we pay. Believe me, we pay. They, they don't pay for anything and as it should be. You, you know, one curve ball that, that brought up, brought up lately is, is the soils. And I hope not to get into a lot of expense exploring the soils. Obviously we want it safe, but we, we, right from the get-go back and I think it was, I don't know if it was two thousand and six or two thousand and eight, whatever those documents say, that we had the soils tested because we, you know, we, we're in a lot, under a lot of heat at that point in time to we're, let me just say, we're very sensitive about lead in the soils. So I, I'm hoping that we can dodge that particular bullet. But obviously, what, we do have some geotext that can do some analysis. Hopefully it just limits to what, what you called about a phase one or a I don't know what it's called, but nonetheless.
Do we have anybody, members of the public or anything that have any comment or, I keep trying to scroll through if we have anybody, but. Okay. Um, if we don't have any other questions for applicant or staff and we're ready to go into deliberations, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of closing public hearing? Aye.
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 Thank you. Good night, Kayla. Have a good night. At this time, Planning Commission will talk, talk it over, talk about anything, make motions. And then that recommendation gets sent to the county commissioners for their next meeting also, I believe, next week. Does anybody want to start?
I don't have much to say and I don't know, you know, I don't have a whole lot of experience on this, but this does seem like a very well-thought-out subdivision. Just even the fact of the orientation of the houses being to maximize the views for every other house is pretty cool. I think one thing I'd like to talk about though, is as you said, Heather, we need to see if phase one stands on its own. And so is there anything we need to talk about to address the affordable housing or anything like that in that first phase? Because the only, you know, if the phase two never happens because of the sanitation issues, which it sounds like it probably will eventually happen. But if it never happens, then this entire development has no affordable housing considerations.
Yeah, and you know, it's so tough because, you know, I've worked on some of these groups and then obviously just in my job. And I, I know looking at his first, what is it, eight, eight to ten lots, it's the way that the lot sizes are in there and the setbacks and things like that. I think it'd be really difficult to make those affordable as far as how the development costs get incurred by the developer, which is why the smallest lots in the subdivision over here are the ones being, you know, identified as potential for that. Because that's the only way to make the numbers work. But that being said, I also, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rub some people the wrong way by saying this, but it's my own personal opinion that one thing I think that we could be pushing for if we don't have these smaller units that can come in an income bracket is you can say, what about dedicating a few to be just that? We don't care what their income is, but that they are dedicated to Lake County workers. At least somebody in the household is, works full-time in Lake County and they're primary homeowners. And, and, and that can be its own form of deed restriction. Whether or not the developer wants to consider that, that's something that we could just say, hey, would you think about this? I know that you mentioned earlier in his presentation that he felt like at least where he's preliminarily guessing his pricing to come in at, that potentially a couple with a hundred and twenty percent AMI could afford one of his regular units. So maybe that's not too far, but to say, well, would you consider, you know, a unit or two of these being de-restricted to just residents and not on the income scale of a deed restriction? So that's, that was why I asked the question earlier about the deed restriction, because I was wondering if that was a possibility to potentially digest that for the developer. Because I, I, you know, obviously that's, was a really attractive piece of this puzzle and, but I also totally understand why he wouldn't be able to do it if he can't get sanitation onboard. So those are my initial thoughts regarding that. And I agree with you on that, Bryce. Does anybody else have thoughts on that or what they, what they think?
Definitely in fan for trying to figure out how something can be incorporated into this first phase. Because good intentions don't necessarily mean anything until it happens.
So the, the condition that's been suggested would say that he would come in at preliminary with, if, if he is coming, so if this isn't the plan that comes at preliminary and it's a phase one plan that he, we, you know, they're in the conditions, there's room for him, for the developer to consider several different options. As well as maybe, like you said, Heather, looking at maybe deed restriction being a little broader, but still. but still serving a very real need, as well as, you know, can one, maybe one of these lots serve as a multi-unit? Could it be a duplex or a townhome attachment or something? So that the density on those, you know, could, could bring about, make the numbers work. But the way that it is, is written is, is to consider that, that some type of solution would be brought forward at the, at the next plating Phase 1. Or if this plan stays intact, then it, then, then this is the dedication.
So are you, were you saying that that's already in your condition? Sorry, I missed that.
Yes, so, so just that as we are taking this in as a, you know, potentially front phased, but we still kind of remain unknown. If this phase goes forward because he's able to come to a collaboration on the sanitation, then this would be what we see at preliminary with the three deed restricted. If it's not, and it comes in with a phasing plan, then the conditions are written for him to consider that that box hasn't been checked. And for a different solution, if there is, is a phasing. So the applicant agrees to a further discussion regarding public land dedication, affordable housing options or payment in lieu. Based on the outcome of this discussion, the applicant will provide a proposal at preliminary plan. And then also, number eight, the applicant will consider the Lake County Comprehensive Plan goal in reference to diversity and housing types. So just if preliminary, what you see is a Phase 1, that, that they would bring an alternative forward.
I like that. So basically, we can just, we know something needs to be addressed. We can wait till we have more details to decide what that would be.
Yeah, I like that too. The only other big one is the height variance. And although I really, really like the design that Jack has for those, I don't love the idea of 45-foot height variance myself. Just as far as going around that corner and seeing really, really tall structures right there, that, that, I just think about the 35-foot house on Sixth Street, and it's really tall. And coming around that corner and just seeing, I don't know, it just seems like it would, and especially since those 30, those 45-foot houses are so close to the road, if they were set back, even back a little bit further, I think it would almost be a little bit easier for me to, to, to be on board with. But because they're just so close, I feel like it's almost going to create this like wall of really tall units right there. What are other people's thoughts on the height variance?
Yeah. Heather, I, I see where you're going, and I, I'm kind of on the fence. Can go either way on that. It seemed like that 40-foot was in, in, in use years ago. And same, and you know, houses are getting narrower and higher. Everywhere they put them up, they're, they're narrow and high. And I really think this is a neat plan of Jack's with that, with the patio up there on that next floor where people are able to sit and enjoy the outdoors and, and look over at the mountains, but, and I thought, well, why does he need an extra five feet? But it makes sense when you explained about putting a roof over the staircase. And I, I really,
It's an extra 10 feet?
I'm not really opposed, opposed to that now.
Just to clarify, and it's 10 feet we're talking about, not five feet, right? Okay.
Yeah, I meant 10, sorry.
No worries. Uh, anybody else have thoughts on that?
The original plan that doesn't push it to 45 still had outdoor space with the view, correct? So, yeah, I'm not loving it. I'm not loving the idea of pushing it up to 45.
Abby, what are your thoughts?
Um, I, I mean, I think I don't have a strong opinion on it. I'm fine with 45. I've seen that similar kinds of development in other mountain communities. And, and I think it, it definitely lends itself to smaller lot sizes if they have, you know, more outdoor space through patios. So I'm fine with it.
And Bryce, did you have any opinion?
I kind of agree with Howard that this is kind of more typical for how's being, how's he's being built this time is that we have narrower, taller houses. And I really think, I, I kind of agree where, or see where you're coming from with the wall, but it's only four houses on that. That would be a wall against the street. And then the other ones that are being built would be, well, I guess there isn't any other really tall ones being built besides Lot 6, and that would look out over the cemetery. So, yeah, I'm kind of indifferent to it, but I don't mind it.
Any other discussion points for people?
I'd like to bring up one if I might. And I, Jack, have you talked, may I ask Jack a question?
Sure.
Have, have you talked directly with Roden Bridge about your planned reductions in road standards?
Um, Mike toured the property with me. Trying to think when it was. Doesn't seem like that long ago, so I guess there wasn't any snow on the ground. Anyway, he, he had no problem with the emergency egress. We didn't even mention the other egress, but I know you're, you're asking about the, the road width. And, and I just mentioned to him that in a lot of newer urban developments, that the narrower the street, the more pedestrian friendly it, they become. A wide roadway can encourage higher speeds at a narrower road. And, and I don't, I can't say that he was for or against, I think in his comments, he, he said I was, you know, four feet narrower than code. But I don't know if that was an objection or just a, you know, making the point that we should be discussing it. And, and, but I certainly would like to keep it narrow, narrower than, you know, four feet narrower than usual. Just for that, create that neighborhood feeling that it's, you know, there are kids playing that, you know, that's part of their hopscotch board.
No, I, I understand that, but I think in order to, you, you eventually would like to have the county commissioners accept that road for maintenance. Is that correct?
Eventually, yes, sir.
I think that they can't do that unless the Roden Bridge Department has actually given you a variance. So they would actually, in, in order for this, these reductions to go into your PUD zoning control document, you're going to have to get approval from Roden Bridge of those variances from County Roden Bridge Design Standards. Because otherwise, the board really is prevented from accepting the road because it doesn't meet road standards.
Okay.
So if the, if the PUD guide tells us what the road standards are, then the Board of County Commissioners will have the opportunity to accept.
Okay, I will definitely make a point to talk to Paul, or excuse me, your Paul, talk to Mike.
Yeah, I think also the, the other point about that is that you have some snow storage shown on Lot 5, is it?
Yeah, we're gonna amend that. We're definitely gonna amend that.
Because I, I think, I think that Roden Bridge, when they come by and plow a road, they're just gonna plow the snow to the side. They're not going to transfer any plowed snow to a snow storage area.
Right, right, exactly.
So I think this all gets kind of worked out in preliminary, right? Preliminary plat is when this is going to get worked out.
Well, it needs.
And, and Public Works already did do a full referral that I have given to them. They have said that they were okay. We can concurrently ask them for an administrative variance to the road so they can get adopted for maintenance if the, if, if under resolution, the, the board chooses to accept the roads. But we did, I, I actually talked directly to Michael on all of the road variations, and I do have it in writing, and I've provided it to Jack, and it's included in here as a condition. But the snow storage is, is listed, that Lot 5 is, is not acceptable, snow storage at the gateway, at the access road. So they're all listed out. If, if they weren't in the engineering, then I've included them, and there's a condition for approval.
It may be then, and that the variances have already been granted.
Well, yeah, right. They're administrative in nature, but I don't think that we've actually called them out. And just to have it on the record, we can, we can make sure that we call them out as variances.
Okay, the only reason, Heather, that I am talking about that now is that it needs to be known now. Because if we get all the way to preliminary plan and we approve a zoning control document that doesn't actually grant those variances, which are administrative, by the way, the Roden Bridge Department can, does administratively grant those variances. The PUD guide is likely going to have to be amended to be able to reflect that they were granted variances by Roden Bridge.
It's something that we ran into with Westwood. So it's just important to make sure that the variances have been granted ahead of time so that when they do petition to the county for road maintenance, that, that's been done. So in essence, I would say we've kind of addressed it, but we haven't formally addressed it. So good, good that you brought it up, Paul, so that everybody considers that in preparation for preliminary, Jack, you should formalize that request to Public Works and say, you know, pursuant to our sketch plan and we, we need verification that you accept these variances from roadway standards. And you can use the same deviation table that you provided within the report. You can do all of those things because all we need is, is an administrative trail of, of, of communication where we've taken care of it.
Okay, thank you very much, both of you.
Uh, any other questions or thoughts before we hear a motion? Does anybody want to make a motion? I know it's really exciting, but I even put it up on the screen so it'd be easy to read.
Okay, I will, if no one else will. Go for it. Great. I moved that the Planning Commission recommend approval to Lake County Board of County Commissioners to file 2112 Tabor Star Subdivision Sketch Plan and file 2113 Tabor Star PUD Sketch Plan with the following conditions. The applicant shall address all comments, concerns, and requirements contained within the SEH Engineering Review Letter and redlined, redlined plat dated July 9, 2021, and includes such within the preliminary plan submittal. Two, the applicant shall adequately address the outstanding concern regarding the identification as reclamation redevelopment on future land use maps contained within the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. Three, the applicant will work with the LCPW to address any outstanding concerns prior to preliminary plan submittal. Four, the applicant shall include within the PUD guide a better elaboration on the intent of the increased height variable at the preliminary submittal. Due to, five, due to phasing plan, the roadway will either be fully platted at Phase 1 or a new design will be presented to address fire access and snow maintenance. Six, the applicant shall provide the recorded easement agreement for the access/entrance into the subdivision. If such agreement does not exist, the applicant will engage with Lake County via staff to negotiate an easement agreement. Likewise, the emergency egress shall be similarly addressed either as a combined or separate negotiation. Access will be resolved prior to or at preliminary plan. Seven, the applicant agrees to a further discussion regarding public land dedication, affordable housing options, or payment, payment in lieu. Based on the outcome of this discussion, the applicant will provide a proposal at preliminary plan. Eight, the applicant will consider the Lake County Comprehensive Plan goal in reference to diversity and housing types. Nine, prior to final plat, the applicant shall be responsible for payment of the school land dedication fee in lieu as determined by the Lake County School District. Ten, the applicant shall require all exterior lighting to be dark sky compliant and include a requirement within the CCRs. Eleven, all statements made by the applicant in his application and in hearing shall be considered as a condition of approval. And further finding pursuant to LDC Section 3.16.3H, can you scroll down just a little bit, Heather? Thank you. Can you scroll up just a little bit? I lost one. There we go. One, as conditioned, the sketch plan is consistent with the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. The proposed sketch plan is in substantial conformance with the expressed purposes, intents, goals, and policies of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. Two, the sketch plan, as conditioned, is consistent with the Lake County Land Development Code. The proposed sketch plan materially complies with all of the standards of this chapter and all of the provisions of this land development code, including but not limited to the applicable standards of Chapter 4 District Regulations, Chapter 5 Use Regulations, Chapter 6 Development Standards, Chapter 10 Roadway Design Standards, and Chapter 11 Flood Plane Damage Prevention. Three, the sketch plan spatial pattern is efficient. The proposed sketch plan demonstrates efficient development pattern, patterns, utility design and installation, and public and private infrastructure through design and layout. The sketch plan avoids requiring duplication or premature extension of public infrastructure or resulting in a leapfrog pattern of development. Four, the sketch plan, as conditioned, has suitability for development. The property proposed to be subdivided is suitable for development considering its topography, environmental resources, and natural or man-made hazards that may affect the potential development of the property and existing and probable future public improvements to the area. Five, the sketch plan, as conditioned, has compatibility with surrounding uses. The proposed sketch plan is generally compatible with the existing and currently permissible future uses of adjacent land and other substantially impacted land services or infrastructure improvements to the area. You can go ahead and scroll up. Thank you. Six, adequate facilities. The applicant has demonstrated that the development proposed in the sketch or preliminary, preliminary plan will be provided, will be provided adequate facilities for potable water supply, sewage disposal, solid waste disposal, electrical supply, fire protection, and roads, and will be reasonably located in relation to schools, police, and fire protection, and emergency medical services, all while maintaining adequate levels of service to existing development. Seven, PUD development standards. As conditioned, the proposed PUD is substantially compliant with standards and requirements of Section 6.1 Plan Unit Developments. And further finding pursuant to LDC Section 6.1.2A through I, A, as conditioned, the proposed modifications are found to be consistent with the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. B, as conditioned, the proposed modifications are found to be an improvement over what would be required under otherwise applicable standards. And C, as conditioned, the proposed modifications are consistent with best engineering practices and performs in an equivalent manner to the otherwise established standard as determined by an engineer retained by the county. D, as proposed and conditioned, the proposal permits integration of uses or obtain desired design qualities. F, as proposed and conditioned, the proposal preserves valued environmental resource lands and avoids the development of natural hazard areas. G, the proposal will maintain an enhanced surface and groundwater quality and quantity. G, the proposal will maintain and enhance surface and groundwater quality and quantity. And I, as conditioned, applicant is expected to address the affordable housing needs.
My seconded.
Seconded by Tritts, thank you. Any discussion on the motion or any proposed amendments to the motion? Okay, hearing none, I'll do roll call vote. Bryce Rilic.
Aye. May I ask a question? Any, any, any decisions on the height?
We would have added it, we'd add it to the motion if there was a change to the commissions.
But not as an amendment.
If somebody wanted to amend it, then it would be added, yeah, it would have been added to the motion. Abby Dolman.
Aye.
Erin Palin.
Aye.
Howard Tritts.
Aye.
Howard, are you there?
Aye.
Thank you. And Heather Lindai. Uh, the motion carries to recommend approval of sketch plan, for the Tabor Star, uh, subdivision. Now, I felt like on that agenda, was there a second part to this? Wasn't there two files that we had to approve here?
Um, both, that was both files, there was the PUD that tracked with the major sub, so that's all of it.
I just wasn't sure if there were going to be two motions, okay.
Nope, it's all.
All right, well, that's. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, that's rough. Yeah, thank you everyone for sticking in there late with us tonight. I, I know we have one more agenda item, can we, what do we need to do with that? Sorry, I don't have the agenda up here.
Um, it was just, uh, I provided the, um, new kind of updated workflow on Backcountry. So, uh, if, if, and you can email me offline about that if you want. We don't necessarily need to talk about it tonight, but I just wanted everybody to kind of see, hey, what's been completed? What does our outline look like and what's left to do?
Okay, cool, thank you. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm, I'll move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a really great night.
Good night.
Thank you.